So I'm going to call this a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen to order for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, day after Election Day, and begin by asking everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is review and approval of the meeting minutes of October 20th, 2020. Paul, you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. We accept them.
I'll second that because our Rich isn't here, although I will abstain because I did miss a little bit of it. I joined it late. Paul, did you see any corrections or anything that needed to be?
No, it's fine.
All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Paul will say aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain so that, Marty, does that count as an approval?
Here's Rich.
I don't, you're, you're.
You're muted, Marty.
Rich, Rich is on now.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Rich.
Marty, you're muted.
Yeah, if you were making comments, Marty.
I'm here.
Hey, Rich.
Hi.
All right, so I just made a motion, or yeah, Paul made a motion, which I said that to approve the minutes of October 20th, and I was not here for all of it, only part of it, so I.
Well, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain, so that, that motion carries. Moving on to first selectment report, things I want to cover with you guys tonight. First of all, in case you had not heard, as we've seen over the past couple of weeks, the COVID cases in Western Connecticut are spiking. In fact, they're spiking around the country and around the world. Europe is in pretty bad shape, but things are picking up here as well, not going in the right direction. So two days ago, Governor Lamont did issue an executive order bringing the state essentially back to the Phase 2 restrictions. He's calling it Phase 2.1 statewide mandatory restrictions, and so I'll just read off capacity this speech for local businesses. Restaurants would have been allowed 75% capacity for indoor dining. This does not apply to outdoor dining, but indoor dining rolls back to 50% and a limit of eight people at a table. And restaurants must close by 9:30 PM. That does not include takeout. Takeout could go on to whatever night that the restaurant wants to stay open, but for indoor dining, they must close by 9:30. Takeout delivery can remain open. Personal services like haircutters, nail salons can remain at 75%. Event menus, various types of gatherings and meetings have gone back to 25 as a limit for indoor and 50 for outdoor. Performing arts and movie theaters have had either 50% of capacity or up to 100 people maximum. And then the last item on the list is religious gatherings, also 50% of capacity or 100 maximum. And the governor in his press conference today was very, very emphatic that he's encouraging religious leaders to go with virtual services as much as possible to try to limit the spread. So the positivity rate in Connecticut, after bouncing up to over 6% last week, is down to 4.9. It's, that's still, so it's hovering, but there's steps being taken to try to keep people safe. There are more hospitalizations coming up again than there were a few months ago during the summer months, so the state is taking these actions in coordination with Rhode Island and Massachusetts to keep it level and keep it from getting any worse, because we are seeing a capacity strain coming up in hospitals around the state again. The second thing is the governor announced just this morning that he's putting more money into the, what they call the Temporary Rental Housing Assistance Program. And this is to help small landlords, people who own rental property, who have tenants who have not been able to pay. So this provides landlords with up to $4,000 in rental assistance per approved tenant. And I have, I've asked Janice Christianik, our Economic Development Director, to put together the parameters for that and how to apply for it, and she will be putting that out to the Chamber of Commerce, to tell the landlords that we know in town, to try to help them out. So those are the two main items I wanted to cover tonight. Paul and Rich, do you guys have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on. Next order of business is public comments. And if anybody has anything they'd like to share who's not already on the agenda, you can raise your hand. And I don't, don't see anybody going once, going twice. So we'll go on to correspondence. Dan, I don't think there was anything other than the packet, right?
There's no correspondence.
All right. Oops, what was?
Sorry about that.
Is that one of our government members? Okay, item number six. It's that time of year again, consideration of application for holiday displays. I'm going to call your attention to the material that were in the Zoom, the Zoom meeting materials. We have two applications for holiday displays. They're both, they're separate applications, but they're both sponsored by the Bethel United Methodist Church. The individual submitting the request is Tim Martin. One is for the traditional holiday crush that has been displayed for many years. The second is the, is a menorah, which was displayed on the town green for the first time last year. The request is for, to have these up, let me see, I have to look at a, look at a, look at a calendar. Up through January 7th, they have, if you go through your materials, they have provided photographs, a diagram of where they would go. They have provided the proper insurance. Yeah, Marty, go ahead.
I didn't get any of that paperwork.
It's, it, Marty, you're muted again.
It was.
I have the two applications. I didn't get any diagrams. I didn't get any photographs. Rich and Paul, did you get those?
Oh, I just got the applications, those two applications.
I pulled these off the Zoom thing, the Zoom documents.
This is what was sent to me.
Yeah, could you bring those up on the screen?
That was what I, I shared with you today, that I had that information, the diagrams, those are the same as last year. That's why I told you I had scanned the applications. All the other information is the same. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Well, Rich and Paul, did you, what did you get? Did you get the?
I, I just received the applications, you know, and if it's the same, as far as I'm concerned, same place, same structure, I'm fine with it.
Everything was the same as last year, so just the applications that I uploaded and figured if there are any questions, it was exactly like it was last year.
I'm all right with that, same as last year's.
Yeah, it is. There was one change, though, that is, it's a deviation from the original policy that we adopted a couple of years ago, and I'm just going to bring up the, the calendar. The application is to, is to put these, put these up on the 24th, 24th of November, which is two days before Thanksgiving. I was thinking that we might want to adjust that policy and make it the Saturday following Thanksgiving. That would be, normally the town has, the town in the Chamber of Commerce has the tree lighting on the Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. That's not, that's less of an issue this year because of COVID. I don't, there's going to be a virtual tree lighting, but there may still be people there. But my thinking is, if we, at some point, we will go back to having a traditional tree lighting, and there's a lot of people on that green, and if it's, if it's crowded with a lot of displays, that could, that could present a public safety hazard, especially with the limited space, you know, for cars and the fire to get through. So I was, I was going to suggest that we move that as a standard policy, that the displays would start the day, the Saturday following Thanksgiving. And I'll open that up for the selectmen. What are your thoughts?
Well, hey, Matt.
Yeah.
Because we're going to do a virtual thing, there's really nothing going on this year, the big gathering for the Christmas season downtown. And in the future, I'm hoping to still move the tree lighting over to the municipal center. So it's really, you know, I don't think it's, we have to do anything right now for.
Okay. All right.
It's something that I, you know, you know, the time goes by so quick, then get done again this year, but hopefully next year we can get a new tree over to the municipal center and do the Christmas greeting at the municipal center.
Okay. All right, then I'll initiate a motion to approve these two displays.
We were going to leave it as is.
Yeah.
As, as the application is indicated. Okay, fine, let's go with the vote.
Okay. Did you make that motion, Paul?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, Rich seconded. So we have motion on the floor to approve the applications for the Christmas fresh and the menorah timeframe from 11/24/20 to 1/7/2021. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, consideration of non-appropriation language from BCI Capital for tax exempt lease. This has to do with the solar projects at the, the new school renovations and the track and field center. And I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Craddy and Mr. Hale. And gentlemen, if you could take us through, you and I, the three of us had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, if you could bring the other selectmen up to speed. So there's basically three solar projects, solar opportunities, and there's two ways that we can go. One is a traditional lease, and the other is a power purchase agreement. So Gary or Bill, whoever wants to go, want to explain how that works?
Yeah, I'll let Gary go forward. The Energy Committee has looked, and we went out for bid, obviously, which you're aware of, and we also bid the financing to come up with the best package. And so we're looking at two, a purchase power agreement versus a municipal lease purchase agreement. So I'll let Gary take it from here and describe.
Thank you, Bill. I won't take it for too long. And thank you, Matt, for allowing advanced energy efficiencies to work with the town of Bethel. It's been a very smooth process with your office and with the yeoman's work that Bill Craddy does on energy matters for Bethel. We are, we have solicited, gone through all the ZRECs solicitation, successfully received the ZRECs for the two schools and the recreation center. If we have questions on the technical aspects of it, I would ask my partner, Adam Burkett, who is here with us, who can explain it better than I can. They, in our company, we, we are successful because they keep me away from the technical stuff, and I focus on the policy and, and all that sort of thing. And we have, at your request, we prepared a PPA, and then, and our own initiative, because we want to make sure that Bethel has, because this is such a great series of projects, we want to make sure that Bethel has access to better financing methods that will give the town more options and, and result in more savings and more energy savings. So I, we have Stanley Fishbein here, who can also go through that. So he and his team can explain the, the lease situation for you. So if it's okay, I would ask that Stan proceed, if that's okay, Matt.
Excuse me, do you not need for me to pull up any of these, the leases or the PPA?
What I'm thinking is that, I want to be sure that Rich and Paul have seen the spreadsheet, because there's a spreadsheet that shows the savings of the two methods, the lease versus the power purchase agreement. So Rich and Paul, do you have access to that?
Is that this?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it. Great job. That's it.
Sorry, I got the fuzzy door.
We'll have Adam jump in.
Yes.
They'll just kind of let me know if I can help, help show, just let me know.
Yep, no, not a problem. I appreciate it. Thank you. So what you're looking at here is, in column A, you have your years, 1 through 20. Column B is one of the locations. I can't see the title on it. If you might just be able to scroll up just a hair, or maybe make the screen a little bit wider. There we go. So we have the track and field in column B. That is the actual solar value, so that is what you see in offset on the electric bill. We have the revenue from the ZRECs. So advanced energy efficiencies, when in bid the ZRECs, and we were awarded the ZREC. I shouldn't just blush over that. It is a highly competitive auction that the state of Connecticut, DEP, runs once a year. And, and basically what it does is it guarantees you a 15-year revenue contract. So there's two major differences. Under a lease, the town of Bethel keeps that revenue. So not only do they get the savings from the system, they also keep the revenue from the ZRECs. On a power purchase agreement, basically you would just have a lower electric rate and savings. So what we did is we ran through, you know, the track and field, Rockwell, Johnson, and basically within the RFP solicitation, the proposals had to come in with a 10-year operation maintenance package included, because our initiative, as my partner mentioned, Gary, that we're looking for the best outcome for the town of Bethel. And when you're looking for the best outcome, you know, sometimes we're all used to doing something the same way, but through our relationships and our networks within the financing world, as we do in the EPC world for solar projects, we have a contact here who's present, Stan Fishbein, and his partner, Gene, and I won't try to pronounce Gene's last name, from BCI. And they offer such a competitive municipal lease product, that we were very interested in, in that. So we actually narrowed that down from three competitors, as we did on the PPA. So everything that we did was highly solicited, from financing to the actual installation cost of the arrays. And what you'll see is in column I, the lease payment over the three sites, and obviously these would be broken down into individual municipal leases per site, because they are three separate distinct locations. But when you combine the three payments, they equal $100,00642, which provided an annual savings year one of $31,00878. And one thing that you'll notice is that the municipal lease ends in year 15 with a no-dollar buyout. That means that the municipality takes control of the system completely and all revenues and benefits. When we slide over and look at the power purchase agreement, what you will notice is that we have basically the solar offset rate. So basically, as the solar is being produced, in column K, in column to column M, and P, and S. So you'll notice that MP and S are the PPA rates, power purchase agreement rates. And those rates are fixed for 20 years, and they're different per site based upon the efficiency of the systems. When you take the, when you add up the savings from column N, column Q, and column T in year one, you get to the year one savings in M4, which is $31,432. So you can see, it's just shy of what we're saving with a municipal lease. But there's a little bit of a catch on the PPA, where basically you do pay a lower rate and, but when you get down to the year 20, you basically come down to two options, which is really a renewal or a termination clause. And what that means is basically you will renew the system for either five to 10 years additionally, or you will want to get out of your power purchase agreement, and you will have to pay a fair market value buyout of, as listed in N30, Q30, and T30. Those values are $83,000 approximately, $76,000, and $93,000, which sums to $253,340, which you can notice in Q34. And so when you actually minus out yours, that cost over the combined PPA savings for 20 years, your net savings is roughly $883,500. So what we did is, by doing all this in town of Bethel's best interest, you know, to us, it was clear that the Cleanview Capital municipal lease was the best option, provided you with the most control of the system. You're controlling the revenue, you're controlling the savings, you do have the forward capacity market that you'd also benefit from, you know, on the PPAs. As Mr. Craddy and I discussed in the Energy Committee meeting, the town, you know, could make the argument for the forward capacity payment for the power purchase agreement, but just, you typically have more control. And what we did is we listed out a bunch of features in basically line 36 and below. Would you mind just scrolling over and scrolling down a little bit? So what you'll notice is that the municipal lease offers that ownership in the 15th year. You have immediately, immediate savings from day one. You get to keep all the energy savings for the life of the equipment. You keep all the utility, local and state payments, such as the zero renewable energy credits and forward capacity. You achieve your environmental goals. It's 100% financed. There is no maintenance cost for the first 10 years, as I mentioned, that was included within the RFP solicitation. You have a fully amortizing municipal lease agreement that is tax exempt. I will let Gene, you know, discuss all this on, you know, the more technical side from the actual bank. You know, but the main thing is, is that you, you know, you have the savings and you're taking control of the, of the system. On the PPA, you do have immediate energy savings as well. You do achieve your environmental goals. There's no capital cost. There's no borrowing, no interest, no maintenance cost. Initial term is 20 to 25 years. You do have the buyout clause, as we mentioned and discussed, for the termination under fair market value. You have a guaranteed energy production, and your monthly payment will vary month over month, because a power purchase agreement is based upon the actual production of the system. So as we all know, we don't have as much sunlight in January as we do in August, as we all wish we did. But basically, the sun operates on a, on a bell curve, right? So basically, it's an upside-down U. So you will pay less towards your power purchase agreement in January, February, March, and typically you'll see that payment rise monthly between April and September, and then again decrease again. So that, just wanted to basically give you, everybody here, the nuts and bolts of everything that we pulled together. And I think I would turn it over to Gene to maybe answer any of the municipal tax lease questions.
I'd just, I'd just like to make one comment that, looking at the cash flow streams from a time value of money on a discounted cash flow basis, the lease purchase agreement benefits the town is greater than what is illustrated by just subtracting the two. If I'm true value of money.
Thank you, Bill.
Very good point. This is Stan Fishbein. Can you folks hear me?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn it over to Gene in a minute, but I first wanted to make a few introductory comments. First of all, I'm a tax attorney and accountant by background. I've been in the equipment finance industry for over 35 years. And for the past seven years or so, as a co-owner of Cleanview Capital, we specialize in financing renewable energy projects, and solar in particular. After having served on the Board of Directors of the New York Chapter of the American Solar Energy Society for 10 years, and feeling very passionate about renewables and environmental concerns, I wanted to put together financing programs that would provide more value to customers than what was currently being offered by folks in the solar industry, primarily these power purchase agreements, and its first cousin called the solar industry lease. And so that's what I've been doing. I have a program using a traditional operating lease for commercial and industrial programs, and now teaming up with Gene Rogero, Vice President at BCI Capital, a subsidiary of First National Bank of Florida. We have this very attractive lease purchase financing arrangement for municipalities and other government entities. I don't know if you folks have used this sort of arrangement for other types of assets, but it's literally been around for 40 years and used by municipalities for things like fire trucks and police cars and school furniture and computers and so forth. And now available through Cleanview Capital, working with BCI Capital. It's now available for renewable and actually any type of energy project, as well as solar. So with that introduction, I want to thank you gentlemen for making the time to have us speak with you this evening. We want to make sure all your questions are answered. I want to just point out one error in, in the features of the municipal lease. The municipality actually takes ownership on day one, not after 15 years. So from day one, you own the system. It's a hybrid sort of lease that has features like a loan, but also like a lease. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Gene as the provider of the product to go into more detail and answer your questions directly. So again, thank you very much, and Gene, take it away.
Thank you, Stan. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Appreciate the, the opportunity to join you all tonight. As Stan indicated, this is a tried and true financing vehicle that cities, counties, and municipalities around the country use for all types of essential use assets. Solar is something that's, we've been financing under a lease purchase, municipal lease purchase for a number of years. Essentially, the amortization period on this is, as proposed, 15 years. But the actual term, if you will, is a, you know, a year-to-year contract. The lease contains a fiscal funding clause. Basically, it's based upon the annual appropriation of the city or municipality. So we're basically banking on the fact that the city is going to appropriate funds toward the lease payment for that fiscal period. In the event that there is not funds appropriated, the municipality basically designates its right to not appropriate, as provided in the lease. They have to de-install the equipment and send it back to us, and they're no longer obligated. So it's, it's not considered debt because it's a one. So it's it's not considered debt because it's a one, you know, year-to-year type of agreement. Um we hope you don't do that. We think these these uh solar arrays are very valuable in terms of, you know, what they can provide this, the citizens of the town. Um but I wanted to point that out to you, so it's not, you know, perceived as a fifteen-year financing like a bond or, you know, a traditional, you know, fair market value lease. Um the rates on these municipal leases are at historic lows, so you're the opportunity to to get into one of these is is, you know, the best time I've seen in years. Rates are in the, you know, mid-twos at this point and that's fixed for fifteen years. Um and again, there's no upfront cost. It's a hundred percent financing and, you know, we can structure the the repayments either on an annual basis, semi-annual, monthly. Uh however, the um, you know, the city wants to uh to repay it. So there's a lot of options there.
Did you say these rates are fixed for the next fifteen years or twenty?
Uh you correct, yes. This is uh this proposed uh project is a fifteen-year financing.
Okay, what what was that rate again? Because I missed it.
Um I'm gonna leave that to Stan. I think we were at.
Well, I think uh current current rates are around two sixty-five, two-point-six-five percent roughly. It's slightly from day to day, but at the moment, uh uh you know, approximately two-point-six-five fixed rate for fifteen years. It's a a tax-exempt rate because the interest is tax-exempt in the hands of the recipients, BCI Capital. And that's why it's below a commercial rate. Uh it's comparable to what a uh municipality would pay on a bond offering without all those upfront costs of a bond offering. If one were even available for such a small dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the maintenance fee. You said after ten years, the town's responsible for maintenance. What it what is the projected uh maintenance fees for the next ten years after that?
A great question, Rich. Uh column H uh carries the uh maintenance fees uh for the three systems.
Okay, let let me just jump in for a minute. Uh BCI is not providing maintenance. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
Uh this is strictly the financing, so Adam has probably arranged maintenance for that first year. Uh first ten-year period, I would assume through another uh source.
Correct, Stan. It was actually part of the uh RFP. And can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And uh column H actually has that uh listed in it, so uh it was.
That's the thirty, that's the thirty-seven thousand four something.
Yes, uh for for the last ten years. That's correct.
Okay. All right, my uh next question was um uh let's see, what was the next question? Uh this might be a question for our legal department. Marty, uh can we commit uh to a project and then it's being funded each year? I I don't think we've done anything like that in the past, have we, for fifteen years?
Yeah, normally we can't do that. We'd have creative and come up with something.
So basically, we you have to approve the whole project and then break it up in into a month, uh not in monthly, but yearly uh.
I think you're right. That's what would have to be done.
So I mean, is have you seen this paperwork before, Marty, or is this the first time you've seen it?
Marty's muted. You're muted, Marty.
Sorry about that. It doesn't have my name or anything on it, so I just glanced at it. I didn't go into any great detail with it.
Uh okay, well. If we go with this, how we gonna finance it, you know, through the um the yearly financing of the town, so.
What Marty, can I just?
I don't believe we have done anything like this.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh you know, Marty, uh just on that same subject, could that be addressed as a bond issue for uh let me just go across here for for twenty-some years, okay, in the amount of one-point-five-oh-nine million. Uh and have something, some verbiage to the effect that this uh would be a hundred thousand six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and twelve cents annually?
Yeah, that's something you could probably consider too. But I I think if you if you approve the whole amount by town meeting.
Yeah.
Uh then I think you can spread it out over time.
Yeah, that'd be just like a fine financing package.
Right, right.
Okay.
But but you know, I think one of the things that I I spent a lot of time this afternoon trying to look up uh what we did for the solar panels that are down at the SIMPOC. And I I gotta tell you, I couldn't find a lot of information. I mean, it's a lot of files. But what what the question is, is that do we even have to have a town meeting? You know, to to lease out this, to do this. And um I think that if you're gonna finance it like you're talking about, then yes, we have to have a town meeting. But if we don't do it and we do it a different way without putting a bond up or financing it all upfront, then I don't think we 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 probably need to have a a town meeting on it.
Okay.
It's not costing us anything, you know, at the time that we do it.
Okay, all right. Rich, you have another, I I I have another question relative to maintenance from uh year nineteen going all the way down to year twenty-nine or thirty, which is a total amount of thirty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Is that fixed or is that just an estimate?
Yes, that that's the uh built from the proposal that was received uh from the actual uh installation company.
Okay.
Well, the question was, was that, is that a fixed price?
Yes, that that is a a fixed price that uh includes the the operation and maintenance of the system.
Is this company bonded?
The, um Gary uh you're muted, Gary.
Well, as part of BCI's uh lease for uh lease purchase agreement, BCI would require the contractor to have a performance bond.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
It's something they would have to put up.
Okay.
What about in insurance, liability insurance? Something goes wrong, um a panel catches fire and the sets the roof of the school on fire. How is that protected? Is that through the town insurance or does the lease, LEC have uh insurance?
Uh the uh the town, the town would uh would need to cover uh both property and liability.
Yeah, I spoke to uh Bill Guerrero about that a month or two ago when this first started coming up. And we came to the conclusion that it would have to be the town to come up with the insurance.
Okay, well, that's something we would have to have that number too.
And and we spoke with, Bill Guerrero knows us from other municipalities. Um you know, it should not affect the actual uh cost of the insurance uh that's currently carried uh at the schools or the track and field.
Uh okay, uh another question on uh you're using a ballast system. How are you attaching these to the roof?
Yes, so um the Rockwell and Johnson, those are flat roofs and they are ballasted. And the track and field is a pitch standing seam roof, so it's a clip system. There's no holes that are going through that roof. It's uh actually what we call an S-five system uh that clips on to the uh standing seam.
Uh on the ballast system, is that, are they rated for hurricane uh winds?
Great question. Uh yes, and we um actually have had a system that went through a tornado uh Bethany Community School um where the tornado went right through the the school. I mean, thirty-six uh forty-inch outer diameter trees ripped out of the ground and uh there's nothing moved on the roof.
That's good to hear. Um.
It's pretty impressive.
Layouts of of the systems on the roof, so the general public can see what it looks like?
Yes, uh we and we presented all that even with the uh Energy Committee as well.
All right, so the uh Bill has all that information?
Yes, but you could also put together um another package uh if we need to.
Well, I I think, you know, as this moves forwards, when if there's a town meeting and things, people will want to see what it's gonna look like. At least, I want to see what it looks like.
Yep. Actually, uh.
I had a couple of questions too. Uh so basically, let me let me reel back to the beginning here. Uh basically, we're, we have, we could go two directions. One is a lease and one is a power purchase agreement. And if I understand this correctly, the lease encompasses a little bit more risk and therefore has more savings for the power person purchase agreement. Is with, is that a good way to put it?
Well, I I don't, I I I I don't know if that's a good way to put it.
Okay.
The the lease is really a hybrid between a lease and a loan. Uh you're gonna, you're gonna have ownership from the get-go. So whether you paid cash or did a loan or did this special type of lease financing, as the owner, you have the responsibility of ensuring and maintaining the system.
Okay.
Uh but like a lease, it has this non-appropriation clause that gives you certain advantages for not treating it instead, et cetera.
Okay.
But having said that, when you look at the values, the bottom line is is uh Mr. Craddy pointed out, if you were to do a net present value, you would see the very large difference in in terms of value to yourselves, which is really generated because you're an owner. And oh, through ownership is how you obtain more value from these solar systems. Now, in in terms of insurance, you, my experience has been, depending on uh your insurance carrier, it's not a large expense to add it with other municipal assets that have been covered by insurance. You could throw that on this schedule and present value it back with the rest of the items here. I think it would make a still a very compelling case, the uh greater value that would be generated for the municipality with the lease versus this PPA. Uh and uh and 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 the O and M is being covered by the company that's doing the installation for the first ten years. So that, again, mitigates your expense, but I don't see it as as you're taking on more risk. You're taking on more responsibility because you have ownership and it's through ownership that you achieve more overall value, long-term value for your municipality. And these PPAs, they were designed by people in the solar industry to make themselves more profitable, not necessarily to provide more value to customers. And that's why I created programs that are attractive alternatives.
Well, I uh I used a different word than you did, but I I, yeah, I get the concept and thank you for that. Uh next question I have is uh from year eleven on and the lease, in the lease structure, where uh the town would be responsible for maintenance, you have a figure here for the three systems of thirty-seven forty-two. Uh i- is that the value of a of a maintenance contract uh on those items? Or is this just an estimate of what maintenance costs might be? How did you arrive at that?
That was something that Adam came up with, uh so I'm, that's a question for Adam.
Okay.
That wasn't provided by me.
All right.
Yes, thanks, Matt. Uh the um the maintenance cost is broken out by what was replied into the RFP. So they had to give a value within the solicitation uh for the first ten years. And then we did the same thing for the additional ten years.
Okay, uh but it but is that, how was that number derived? Is that, is that like a historical number?
Uh per watt, uh a per watt on the system.
Okay, but is that, is that a, is that typical uh like a real-world experience? For maintenance? I mean, I'll give you an example. I've got, I've got a solar array on my home. Uh and it's it's a power purchase agreement with through Tesla. And uh it got hit by lightning and there was some damage to it and company came out and just simply replaced the panels that were damaged, replaced a couple of inverters and I I saw no bill. You know, I if if I were to own that system, I know that I would either have to have a maintenance contract like I have on my heating plant or just pay out-of-pocket. I'm just get, I'm just trying to take a guess at what maintenance costs typically are for a array of this site.
Yep, so the uh nice thing is, is that the uh panels come with a twenty-five-year warranty and the inverters, we uh always have the installers uh purchased a extended warranty. So they're warranted for twenty years as well. And um so basically, what's what the cost is covering is for the labor to come out, uh unscrew the inverter or uh or undo the bolts for the panels. And uh you know, basically, it's a plug-and-play uh where they're disconnecting a few wires and actually reconnecting it and uh re-energizing the system.
Okay.
So basically, the, you know, it's covering your uh two, two times a year. Um they're doing a site inspection where they're checking wire management. Um and then, you know, anytime that there'd be a panel or an inverter that would need to be swapped out, uh that's what it's covering.
Okay. Uh the next question is that the does the uh output of the panels decrease over time as they age? And if so, how much?
Yes, uh they lose a half of one percent per year.
Okay. Have they been around long enough that we have experience with, say, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years?
Actually, what we've experienced is that they haven't uh, you know, degradation hasn't actually been at a half of one percent uh in the first ten years. Um it's actually been less on uh most panels. Um but it's something that was built as an industry standard uh to work through the pro forma. Um you know, so it's uh basically a safe, conservative estimate.
That degradation uh is warranted by the panel manufacturer over that twenty-five years.
Okay, it's a twenty-five-year warranty, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Through my activity on the New York Solar Energy Society, there've been examples provided of solar systems that are still in use after thirty years and doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's not like other high-tech equipment where you have to upgrade to the latest and greatest model. If it's working, the wheel ain't broke, you don't need to fix it.
Yep. All right, uh now, one question, uh obviously, one, one program here uh offers better uh savings than the other. But to look at the PPA, I I'm surprised that there's a buyout at the end. Uh you know, with residential systems, when you get to the end of the contract, you either uh renew or replace or say, okay, you can take it off my roof now and go home. But there's, there's no buyout on on that. Is is this typical? Why, why is there a buyout?
Uh well, there's actually technically a buyout on residential too. I have over seven-hundred-and-forty houses installed with Trinity Solar. Uh spent eleven years in the industry and just a lot of uh sales reps are taught on when they're selling a system to a residential owner is we don't talk about buyouts. Basically, they talk about, oh, the system is still gonna be good, you know, we'll, we'll turn it over to you. Um you know, you could just call up and tell us that you want us to remove it. But in actuality, if you read the fine print of the contract, there is a fair market value. They cannot provide you a contract that actually states it does not have a fair market value buyout.
Or they build it into the price on the front end, right?
On the IRS laws, I'm not the tax attorney. Mr. Fishbine could actually comment on that, but no, due to tax laws, uh fair market value does not allow that.
I'll I'll address, let me just chime in, to be a true lease, in order for the owner to claim the investment tax credit, it has to have a fair market value purchase option in there. They can't just turn it over for a dollar.
Correct.
And that's part of the way that more value goes to these solar companies than to the customers.
Yeah.
Uh and and by the way, on the municipal lease that we're talking about, the municipality's name remains on the electric meter. If you were to do the PPA, the name on the electric meter gets changed over to that PPA provider.
Right, right. All right, uh Rich, Paul, what other questions do you guys have?
Yeah, I have another question. Just um, you know, we, we have a lot more sunny days and stuff and we generate more uh power. Um do, does the town uh benefit from the uh extra power that it creates? uh power. Um do, does the town uh benefit from the uh extra power that it creates? Or does it go to the lease to the the leasing?
Nope, everything that is generated from your roofs uh stay right there with the town. So basically, through the benefits and policy and the state of Connecticut through net metering, uh your meter goes backwards and the benefits stay at this at each location.
Yeah, that that was my next question about net metering. It goes back into the grid.
Yes, sir.
Uh cuz uh, you know, the schools during the summer are are not being utilized a hundred percent. So uh you know, that's the best time that they're making uh power and if and if the school is using it, you know, that's the best thing that that can go back to the grid.
But the other big thing too is under the uh municipal lease, there's another option that uh isn't um necessarily highlighted here. And it's the control over the asset, right? And it's very important to understand this and and Gary is well aware of this and Mr. Crowley probably also is aware of this, but in the upcoming year here in twenty twenty-one, the legislative body through Piera's, uh one of the new commissioners is uh really looking to advance uh batteries and battery storage. Um with you to having the uh control of the asset, unlike in a power purchase agreement. Uh if the program comes out, which we believe it will be coming out within twenty-one, possibly twenty-two. Uh there's gonna be very significant rebates. Uh this is something that Mr. Fishbein and his team also finance is storage. Um so it is has the ability to um, you know, in upcoming years to even possibly add batteries onto this system. Uh and and actually use it in the forward-capacity market and uh demand response.
In addition, in addition to that, now, as you're aware, of our original uh plan, energy efficiency plan that the Energy Committee had developed is is the the one leg which which we don't have going yet, which is the objective is to put a a uh microgrid on the school park. And these would feed into that grid and we'd benefit from that. And not only, you know, the purpose of the microgrid would be sustainability, so that when we do have power outages and whatever, we have our own power, we have the solar generating power into the microgrid. Uh without the microgrid, that there's a an outage, the solar is down, it's not generating anything, we're not benefiting from it. So the fact that that the town would have ownership facilitates it uh the microgrid initiative that we eventually want to get.
Alright, uh Bill or whoever, uh what kind of power are we generating in each of these buildings? You have a a a number, it's probably here somewhere, but I don't see it.
It's okay. It's uh so basically, over at um, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand kilowatt hours, uh two hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt hours and two hundred and sixty thousand kilowatt hours.
And two hundred and sixty?
Yeah. So there's um, and all that was derived right from the electric bill uh state of Connecticut. And also uh what we had always advised, it's never a benefit to the customer to overproduce the uh power more than what they currently consume. So um all that was derived uh right from the electric bills.
Okay, so so the the amount of solar panels is really derived from the the load on the building?
Absolutely correct. That is very correct.
Fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. I've been involved with Bill for a few projects.
Now, it's uh you're right on the money.
Alright.
Bill, uh Paul Zatowski here. Uh I you got, pick my interest about uh battery storage is is how much of a cost are we looking at? Uh and do we have need to uh construct a special building for for the uh batteries?
No, there's not. Would be a central storage, you would have batteries at at each location. Uh you know, that could be uh fed by the by the uh 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 solar. And once you have batteries, there's an additional opportunity now in in that EverSource has that if you have batteries and and uh you can discharge them uh at at their request, you can get uh significant uh payments from EverSource for being able to provide that, because what you're doing is relieving the stress on their distribution by taking load off of it when it's at a peak. So you have with with the solar, uh we would also be getting the forward-capacity market payments like we're getting for the landfill solar. Uh that's due to be an ownership. And then with the battery, you'd have additional forward-capacity market uh opportunities for payments plus additional payments from EverSource. So there's ways to generate revenue uh as we go forward uh with the system, with having the ownership and the way the financing through the lease purchase agreement is.
How expensive are we looking uh at at this point, our batteries?
Well, batteries are coming down in cost. I don't know right offhand. I could I could get some uh projections uh you know, for um batteries of appropriate size. I think Adam could help us do that too. Uh and we could put together what would be, you know, today's cost of a battery installation would be.
Yeah, okay, good, because you know, I'm always involved in revenue too. This this might be just an absolute uh opportunity. So if we could get some, get us some estimates on that too, I think it'd be great for for our discussions.
Okay, and Paul, to follow up on that, again, you don't want to forget that um just like we have the Z-Rac program and we were had to bid for the competitive uh bid on that with the state through uh Department of Energy Environmental Protection. Um they are going to run the same sort of uh rebate incentive program for the batteries as well. So uh even when we generate whatever that full cost will be, uh there will be incentive dollars as well, sir.
Great, good.
So you have a from the state and then you also have a from the power company who shared the load tech thing?
Yes, sir. That's correct, Rich.
What's what's your timeframe?
Right now, we are, we're looking to be able to uh exercise uh the option here and and be off to the races. Uh basically, what we're looking at is uh six to eight weeks on uh procurement of materials. And before you have uh, you know, materials at the site, there's permits and also interconnection applications. Uh the interconnection application is about a sixty-day process with utility. And before you get to that process of sixty days, you have to have an electrical engineer design the electrical one-line. Uh fill in all the components, um which usually takes about two to three weeks. So if uh we kinda go forward with it that way, you're looking at three weeks on preparing drawings. Uh submitting them for permits, uh interconnection gets you to another sixty days. Um and then uh, you know, we'd be ready for installation sometime March, April, once uh the weather.
Alright, yeah, because uh I I know the school project's not really winding down to the the end of December, so uh they're not gonna let you on those roofs until they're a hundred percent done over there on the on the school project, but the field house, uh that's all squared away. You could get started on that one too right away, but uh
We we've been, we've been up on those.
The lead time. Yeah.
We we know, we've been part of some of those conversations, so we're we're aware. We 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 know what you guys are going through. Uh it's it's been one big undertaking. You guys are doing a great job and uh it's really come along nicely.
We're trying to make them rain tight right now. Yeah, so your le- your lead time is for those proj- for the project is gonna get beyond the completion of the date of the schools anyway. Okay.
Rich, even if they have a punch list, uh we'll we'll coordinate accordingly. Uh no, it it's, you know, all, it's all about communication at the end of the day. So we pride ourselves on is being able to communicate, uh coordinate and make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh you know, from the the principal to Bob Ger- Germano.
Oh, yeah.
Now, so I make sure everybody's on the same page, everybody knows what's going on. Uh and and I've been a great, great help to us as well.
Let let me ask one more question. What's the typical installation time of a project that size?
Um, we're looking at, we're looking at basically five to six weeks per site.
Five to six weeks, okay.
Yeah, per site. Um and and that that's that's definitely reasonable. Uh, you know, that that's not like, you know, that's given us some days for weather. Uh I mean, obviously, if we had a week of rain, um you know, be a little, you know, might have to add a week on, but uh you know, we've been in such a problem for the last year and a half.
Get it started late, late winter, early spring, then you you're into the sunny season to say.
Yep.
Or the the season produces electricity, so that's good.
Correct. Yeah, our goal would be to get these operational for uh for July, August timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
That's all I understand. It's five to six weeks per site.
Yes, 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 Marty. Yes, that's correct, Marty.
Can I backtrack one second?
Go ahead.
When when it was being discussed about the maintenance fees for the lease, uh lease lease interest. I I gotta, I lost it someplace. Uh I understand what maintenance is. That the panels would be uh a warranty for a long time period. So what would happen is if a panel goes bad, do we have to pay the maintenance company additional funds to replace it?
No, no, that that's what that thirty-seven forty-two and annual number is for.
So the maintenance includes the labor, replace something that's warranted under with somebody else.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so that's why the warranty, the extended warranties are so important, Marty. Is that uh, you know, there's no cost of the material. It's the the manpower to get out there. You know, and and actually do it and and then we have to file a whole bunch of things for when we go and return these. You know, you don't just take the panel off the roof. They gotta be sent back. The inverter's gotta be sent back, so you know, it's just uh, it's time. It's really what it comes down to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
No problem, Marty.
Uh, Rich and Paul, any further questions?
No, I I think we've got enough here, Matt. I I think we need to service um sit down with each other on this thing along with probably Board of Finance too, you know.
Well, what I would suggest we do is uh vote to send this to the town attorney uh and I, Marty, I think you did you do, did you receive a copy of their boilerplate agreement? You're you're muted again.
Yes.
You're muted, Marty.
Getting a thing, so I shouldn't be muted. Um it says solar power purchase agreement. I don't know if this is one that you would do for a lease or not. And it says Davis Hill Development is provider.
No, that, the uh Did I lose everybody? Yeah, it's it's uh Marty, I'll I'll make sure everybody has it. It's it's the BCI uh lease.
Okay, that's what I, this is not BCI.
No, we can, we can get a copy of that too.
Alright.
We'll send over a copy.
Okay, well, why don't we have Marty uh take a look at that first and then uh so we'll start moving down the road and get this approved through the through the normal channels. And at this point, Marty, you believe also that we don't need uh a town meeting or a referendum, correct?
No, but it depends on how you're gonna end up with the financing, you know, I think you you can't go into the agreement, but then depending on how you want to do the financing, that's a different story. We may end up doing one.
Okay.
I mean, as far as putting it on top of the roof and everything, no, that's not a problem. It's it's the financing. That's how you're gonna do it.
Right.
I might comment that that in the nineteen eighties and and uh early nineties, when I had my uh energy conservation company, the Towner Corporation. Uh I did numerous amounts of of taxes and lease purchase agreements for energy efficiency projects throughout the state of Connecticut. Uh Art Mannion was uh the financial advisor for us and the key thing which which we understood is that 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 one of the key benefits of the lease purchase agreement is that it does not obligate with a non appropriation clause, it does not obligate uh one uh, you know, one year financing to another. It's the year year by year, you have to make a decision, so it's like like uh there's saying earlier, it it's uh, you know, just a series of one-year purchase orders or purchases uh type of a thing, but the fact that it per the uh non appropriations clause is key, uh because it doesn't obligate the town to more than one year at a time.
Okay.
Matt, I got one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Um, the uh the the maintenance fee, that includes like an annual inspection of the system. Uh make sure everything's working. Who oversees the system to make sure it's working properly? Uh I I understand the company probably does it the first ten years, but what happens in the second ten years? Is that done under the maintenance program?
One of the things of of monitoring the system is the these uh systems will be enrolled in the ISO New England uh forward-capacity market, just like the the landfill one is. And we have to report monthly the kilowatt hours that are generated. So you have a monthly report uh to the ISO. Uh so that monitors a lot the performance and when the systems, you know, if they fall off, you pick it up right away if if there's a problem. But they'd be monitored uh by uh, you know, virtue of submitting and getting paid by the ISO that they are functioning and delivering power. So you have a constant uh monitor of them.
Uh hey, Bill, I got a quick question for you. Did we ever get our monitor downtown hall for the uh landfill project?
Well, that's the, it's on the, it's on the the outside side of Dion's office there. Uh it's got the IT people can um put the the uh, you know, show whatever they want from it. From the solar system on there, it's set up to do that. I don't know if they've done that or not. Dion might have a lot more to make on that to me.
Actually, I I know the status of that. Uh Nick, our our IT specialist, our network specialist, had to uh, there there's something with the server that needs to be replaced on that, so it's not functioning at at present, but we know what needs to be done.
Okay. Yeah, I I'm waiting for seeing that screen up there and saying, we're sitting, making all this money off the landfill.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll be, will there be something like that for the school, for these other projects also?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, great.
Alright, well, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this and and send uh pay the uh the lease agreement and send that to town council for review.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Well, alright. Those are favors, say, probably say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That pushup carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Who has that? Adam, do you?
Thank you, everybody, for clarifying a lot of this. Uh this was a great meeting.
Yes.
No problem, Paul. Thank you for the opportunity. And uh Mayor just actually uh sent over the uh another copy of the lease. Um so I um you can get it over to Marty and and whatever else uh needs a copy of it.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice chatting.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. So long.
Moving on to item number eight. Hold on just a second. Too damn many phones over here. Uh item number eight, consideration of the proposal for Truck Builders of Connecticut. Dipple is on the line with us, although his screen says his name is Karen. But uh we do have a uh uh document here that that shows the cost of of building the truck. If you remember, this is the truck that we per- we approved the purchase and sent to the Board of Finance several months ago. This is the truck, uh chassis and and cab. And this is the uh the backend. This is the part that does the work. Uh which we knew that was gonna come through as a separate cost. So I'll uh I'll bring the floor over to you if you want to add anything to that, any explanation?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, I mean, basically, what it's what's written there is what it is. You know, there's there it's it's um a heated body for for a hot patch in the in the summertime and a cold patch in the in the wintertime. Um and you know, the uh the heated part is underneath the standard dump body that we're having built. Um you know, there's a snowplow on the front of it, the the snowplow of the frame. Um, you know, there's a snowplow on the front of it, the, the snowplow of the frame, hydraulics, hydraulic tank, you know, uh, so on and so forth. The controls for the hydraulic system and then power beyond it, and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a one-off custom-built body for the, for our, our hot patch and stuff like that. And, but it'll also give us use for the truck at any other point during the year also. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions. I'm sure you've all read through this. If you had any questions or anything, go ahead and shoot them.
What's it used for? Asphalt primarily?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think we have, one of the problems we have, uh, Paul, you know, in the wintertime, we put a load of cold patch in the back of the truck. And, you know, when you go out, when it's ten degrees out, you know, that cold patch has a certain amount of moisture in it, so, you know, on the road with that stuff, you know, within an hour, the cold patch is frozen pretty solid.
Yeah.
Get cold patch warm and usable, you know, throughout the day during the wintertime. And then, you know, you leave the asphalt plant over in Danbury or Newtown or Brook or New Milford in the summertime, you know, you, you know, the material, your, your hot patch during the summertime is, you know, eighty-five, almost ninety bucks a ton. And in the summer, in the wintertime, your cold patches, I think probably right around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two bucks a ton. You know, so you keep the, the material solid, viable in the winter and decent.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. That stainless steel, is it passivated? In other words, uh, it'll never rust?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, the, the body itself is three oh four stainless steel.
Okay.
Or the truck is what we call hard ox steel. It's not stainless steel, but it's, it's a hybrid nail steel. Um, you know, well, I don't, best example I make is, you know, a piece of mild steel is probably like, like forty-five, fifty thousand per nail, right? So this is, and, and that's, it's very abrasive resistant.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, stainless steel isn't abrasive resistant or it's, it's, and it's easily dented and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
All right, uh, to further our discussion, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the proposed amount of forty-two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. It's at the Board of Finance, uh, for their meeting next week for their approval, uh, to be applied to capital not recurring account. And this is within budget. It is anticipated. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Paul. Any further discussions?
No.
No.
No, hearing that. Those in favor, say, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Karen, you're off the hook. All right, uh, moving on, uh, the next two items, consideration of approval for Briar Cliff Pump Station Emergency Generator and consideration of approval of Eureka Water Treatment Plant Generator. Uh, these are actually already pre-approved by, uh, Public Utilities Commission. And ordinarily, we wouldn't need to go through Board of, Board of Selectmen. However, they are eligible for some grant reimbursement, so therefore they need a municipal resolution. So I'm going to, so we'll have four, four motions actually. I was, I'll just read the first one and we'll vote, then the second one, then we'll do the, the resolutions. Uh, first one is, uh, make a motion that we approve the Briar Cliff Pump Station Emergency Generator as requested by Public Utilities Commission. Uh, hold on a second, let me give you the, trust that, in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, heck, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the Eureka Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Okay, for the resolutions, uh, I will do the Briar Cliff first. Um, hereby resolve that the, uh, Marty, do I have to read the resolutions into the record? Or thi- this is something for Lisa to, uh, to, uh, sign off on? You're, you're muted. You're still muted.
Still muted.
I'm trying to press the spacebar, which is supposed to unmute and doesn't. But I, 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 I think that if, if you just refer to it and ask that it be incorporated by reference, I think you can get away with that.
Okay.
That's the problem. I don't think we gotta keep reading everything like that.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you know, Paul's got one in front of him. I think Rich has got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Refer to heading on it and just incorporate the motion starting versus where does the Board of Selectmen, it ends up, it ends up further Matthew, Nick or Barker, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, okay. All right. So will, what, yeah, Dion will have that? Great, great. Thank you. Uh, we're done with that, right, Marty?
Yeah, you, you just, you just, I would just, I would just vote to, uh, approve it as an official municipal resolution, that's all. As a, as a vote by reference, that's all.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll put them, I'm gonna do it as one motion now. I, I will put a motion on the floor that we approve a municipal resolution, uh, for the Briar Cliff Pump Station at the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and the Eureka Lake Pump Station, uh, Water Treatment Plant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars as submitted.
Second.
All right, Rich seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. That carries. And, uh, now we get down to the, the last item on the agenda, which is further discussion of the, uh, proposal for a fire commission. Uh, I, I want to see, uh, Paul and, uh, and Rich, did you get Marty's memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, what I'd like to do is start by going down that. Marty's got seven recommendations here, seven points. Um, so let's, let's see, uh, if we agree on, on these things. So I, item number one, uh, Party is suggesting that we add all related departments that the, that the town funds in addition to the fire department, so that it would include ambulance, EMT, um, and emergency services and paramedic services. Uh, and he notes, even though the town does not own the ambulances, they're, uh, they're housed in the building, there is support, uh, you know, the, the, the system is covered under town workers' comp insurance and, and so forth. Uh, do you guys agree with that recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, I think my consensus will add this and it will, because we still have a lot of discussion before we get to a final document. So we'll add that. By the way, uh, I, I should have said this at the beginning. My intention here is to get us to a framework of what we want this to look like. And at the next meeting, invite, uh, Tom Galliford and the fire chiefs in to go over this with us, so they can give their feedback too. Uh, and, and get the, get their, get their feelings on it, if there's anything that they spot as a huge problem. Uh, so that, that was in the original timeline that I put in the original proposal. Uh, anyway, number two, fire departments, emergency services, EMT, if warranted, ambulance, would present their budgets directly to the commission and the commission would be responsible for, uh, presenting to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. So in other words, you know, the, the structure we have now is that each department presents individually. Uh, I think Party was suggesting that we have better clarity as to those budgets going through the commission and then the commission being responsible for passing them on to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
Well, this, this basically, uh, is similar to like the police commission, in other words.
Yes, that's correct.
But, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw this question out. Um, the two fire departments, how much, um, rejection are we gonna get from them about this?
Oh, no.
Uh, you know, I, I, they, they could complain all they want about it, but you know, my, my, my thought is, hey, we, we gotta, we have to put a check on this whole thing, because we have a perfect example of what has happened in the past. And I, I think, uh, this is the reason why we want a fire commission, period.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's my bottom line.
Paul, that, that's what Matt had, uh, said, that the next meeting have the two fire chiefs and the, um, and Tom Galliford come in. And they can tell us, you know, what they think, they like it, they don't like it, or how we're gonna proceed from there.
Well, let me, let me give you another dimension to this.
Process.
Yes, that's correct. Let me give you another dimension to this that, uh, just came up today. I had a meeting with Bob Kozlowski and, uh, Brad Herring and our IT department. Uh, there's a request from Ethel Fire for some assistance in their network and, and some, uh, computer upgrades. And basically what I see happening is, over a period of time, we're, we're going to be integrating our fire departments, even though they're volunteer. Uh, they're, they, they rely on us now for the phone service. They're going to need help integrating the internet and, and getting on our same network. We really kind of need to join, yeah, we need to integrate the way we have with the police department. Now, the, the police department still has, they have, uh, some separate, uh, computer stuff over there, but they're still integrated into our email system and to the, into the internet. You know, the, the NTIS system that they use has to be separate. It has to be sequestered, uh, for security reasons. But we're, this is the direction that we're moving and I, and I agree with the analogy that you used, Paul, that it, it has to be more like the police commission where these things, they, they work together and they, and they're integrated and those budget things are analyzed at a different level before they come into us.
I agree. Okay.
So is there agreement on item number two?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, item number three, Marty suggested is that, uh, is, is any contracts be, that are entered into and funded by the town, uh, through the fire department is also reviewed by the commission and, and that, that's certainly my intent. I think he just wanted some better clarity on that in the language. Any disagreement on that?
No, not really, but you know, the, the question comes down to, uh, I just want to go back to the contract we've got with Danbury Hospital on that. So what this is going to do, I, I assume is this fire commission is going to, uh, uh, get the contract and just bring it before the Board of Selectmen for approval or disapproval, right?
Uh, yes, although the, to use that example, that contract is with the police department. They hold the license on the paramedic. It doesn't, it doesn't go through them.
All right. Well, wait a minute. I, I want to make sure I understand this, uh, or clarify this. My, my intent was, um, for them, let's say the paramedic contract comes through, they would rev, oh geez, they would review it. All right, and then what they would do is they would pass it on to the Board of Selectmen with their recommendations. I mean, and maybe it's a sore subject to bring up, but like the insurance and pension commission, all right, anything else, the same thing. You know, what it does is it, it, it puts another layer in there and every, you might look at it as being a necessary layer, but I don't, I don't agree with that, because hopefully the people that we have on this fire commission are going to be, have some type of background, pretty much be familiar with what's happening. And, um, you know, their recommendation should carry some weight. They don't have to, but it'd be the final, would be the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so, so it's recommending body rather than a governing body?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
That's what I saw too, you know, that we, Board of Selectmen is a final.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Uh, just as a side note, before we get to the end of this thing, uh, not at this meeting, but we should also, uh, take a look at our current EMS commission, because we, we do have a commission that meets occasionally, uh, to, to go with, uh, to go over, uh, medical services. So where this, the, the fire commission ends, where the EMS commission begins, if there's any crossover, if we want to integrate it, that's something we have to discuss at a future, at a future date. But right now, I just wanted to get the, the goals and responsibilities down, the basics for the fire commission.
Who, who makes up the EMS commission right now?
Um, I see Thomas is on with us. I'm not to put you out of spot, but, uh,
Is that?
Beside you, uh, who, who's on that? I think it's you and Laura and the, uh, the EMS captains from each of the two departments, right?
No, it's, uh, you're the chair and then it's the emergency management director, the, the health director and the two fire chiefs.
Okay, yeah, that's.
The board of five.
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Uh, item number four is a very important one. Um, we had, what I had put in my original recommendation was that, uh, one, that, well, one member of each department would automatically be a member of the fire commission. Marty is suggesting that we not make that, not make that mandatory. They can serve if it's appropriate, if they, if they wish to and they're approved by the Board of Selectmen. But, uh, his suggestion here is that we leave that open and not make it a mandatory item, which I think, I think makes sense. I mean, it, it's an optional item and not mandatory. And therefore we could, uh, keep it to five members instead of going to seven. Paul, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, can we get harmony, you think, between these two departments? We, we only have one person. I don't think so. Not unless we just declare, say, there's only gonna be one fire department. I don't think we, I don't think we can, uh, expect that within the near future. There's just too much friction, frankly, between the two fire departments. I, 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 I got, I got mixed motions about this thing. Uh, uh, should we have, it should, you know, I, I think you, you just about have to have one from each fire department for the time being. At least that's, that, that's my feeling. Uh, Rich, what was your thought?
Well, I, 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 I agree with Paul. I think we need a representation from the fire department. Um, I, I like to see it at seven, um, because not all the time, maybe everyone can make it either, so, um, and, you know, originally we, I, I was heading towards the seven members, but, you know, this is still a start, so, you know, let's get feedback from, uh, the fire chiefs when we talk to them next meeting.
Okay, all right, so.
Yes, Marty.
I was gonna say, I, I'd agree to get the feedback from the chiefs, but you have to understand, one of the reasons why I brought this up is that you don't want arguments on the board. I mean, you know, you want them to be above the fire departments. And what could happen, and I'm, and I'm gonna point, I'm gonna brush everybody with the same stroke here, which is probably not correct. The people, who's gonna decide who puts them on? The fire departments? They're gonna put the most cantankerous people on that they can, not necessarily, and, and I'm not trying to say that for both departments, but of one department, I think we're gonna have a problem with, we've always had a problem with it. Paul, you said it before, they're just gonna throw a monkey wrench in the whole system. That's why, you know, yes, put them on, but not necessarily ma- make it mandatory, because who's the mandatory person gonna be appointed by? Be appointed by the, by the fire department, and we've had many issues before.
Can we say?
Just the chief?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Rich.
Should, should it be just the chief?
Well, that's a possibility. That, that'd be better if you wanted to do something like that.
Ra- rather than having someone cantankerous, uh, have them on the board, you know, that they stick them on there. You know, the chief is supposed to be the responsible person for the department.
Yeah, the chief, the chief, basically, the car's both EMS and fire.
You're smiling, Marty. What, what's on your mind?
Yes, you know, I, I know, I know Tom's listening here and, and I'm not trying to, I, I just.
He's on the spot anyways. Tom, speak up.
On one fire department, I just think no matter who they put on, whether it's their chief, whether it's, uh, whether it's somebody that they pick out and appoint, they're gonna be a problem. And you don't want that problem on the fire commission. You want the fire commission to work together, not be constantly battling one person, one department or another department. And I really think with what I've seen in the last ten years, and it's not something that's just happened overnight, it's gonna be a problem. You know, so I don't mind talking to the chiefs about it, you know, but I, that's my feeling, so, but I don't, I don't vote, you guys do, so.
All right, how about, how about, can we get a little, uh, I don't know who do it, Marty or Tom? Can we get, uh, some feedback from other commission, uh, fire commissions through, in the air?
Yeah, well, I read all those fire commissions and most of them don't have mandatory of firemen on there. That's, that's why I think I say that, don't I?
Um.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Unitality fire commissions do not include fire members on the commissions. And I, I'm not saying not to include them completely. I'm just saying I would make them mandatory.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, the other thing too is that, uh, unless you had a problem, I, Matt, did you, did you send your initial outline to Alfred? Has he seen?
Uh, I think so. Did, did I, Tom, did I send you that?
Did you get that?
Uh, yes, you did. The initial one you sent to me.
So if you don't mind, I'll send Tom my memo too.
Okay, yeah.
And, and, you know, And, and, you know, I, I have a lot of respect from what Tom says. I'm not trying to blow smoke up his skirt, but I, you know, pretty straight shooter, so. Uh, Tom, I'll send you a copy of this that I did, so you can look at it and give me your opinion too.
Sure, no problem.
Let me ask this question. I never sat on the fire, uh, the police commission. So wh- when the police commission meets, do they have somebody from the police department? Uh, is it just the chief that sits in there? Or is it the captain? Or, or is it at the discretion of the, uh, police commission to invite who to, to the what, uh, to the meeting?
The, the only voting members are the elected members of the police commission. So the captain is there. Uh, I'm sorry, the chief is there and participates in the meeting, you know, and is responsible for reporting department operations. But, uh, there's no voting member who's a member of the police, the actual police department. There are just, the whole board of civilians.
So it's really up to the police commission to invite them if they want them at a meeting to discuss anything.
That's correct.
Maybe, maybe, maybe Marty's right about this. Maybe we should go that route and just to dispense any of this, uh, friction.
Well, we could leave our recommendation the way it is now or, uh, in.
I, I, right now, I think, I think I'd like to leave it as is because, you know, just thinking about it, you know, that's the reason why I asked that question about the police commission. Uh, I didn't know, I didn't know if the, if the chief was just automatically on it, but since he's not, fine, we'll do the same thing for fire.
Okay, well, okay, so what, so are you, are you suggesting that we go with Marty's suggestion, make it five members and, and?
When we get to this question about five members or seven members, whatever it is, I, 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 I've got a, a, a problem, okay? And help me here, uh, since we're talking about it. If we take a look at the, uh, people that solved our problem with the aerial truck, okay, the, the, these are perfect people.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Yeah, uh, a- and then when you take a look at, you know, the last item here on the list about reports to the finance department, are, are, who's gonna generate these reports? Is it the commission? Because some guys are, you know, they're firemen, but they're not, they're not accountants either. Uh, uh, this is, should, should it be the, I don't, I don't know if the fire department's got an accountant, each, each fire department or not, uh, to generate these reports? Because are we, are we going to insist that the fire commission's gonna generate the report? Uh, if, if you don't have somebody with a so-called, at least a meager amount of accounting, uh, what, what kind of a report are you gonna get?
No, I, I don't necessarily think that it was the intention, my intention or Matt's, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, to have, um, to have the departments, I'm sorry, to have the commission generate these reports. You know, this is something that Matt had on his, on his, on his, uh, outline that he thought that if they got money from the town, then they should be able to filing information and providing information to the finance department. And I, I happen to agree with that, you know? I, I mean, you know, and then they don't, they don't all get money directly, but they do get money. And I think that, like, for instance, where you know you're gonna see money, is you're gonna see, they have to have some kind of financial situation regarding the, her ambulance course because they're billing for it. So they could just provide the information. And it's also my understanding, uh, and Tommy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that what they do is they keep track of, you know, the, the men that go to the fires and, and gen- and go to ambulance calls, you know, they have a checklist, who they are, so they have information regarding, you know, how many they, they attend and their reports. So I mean, yeah, maybe there has to be something that's gotta be slimmed down or, or outlined a little bit better, but they have information. That's all I'm saying. And I would just suggest that if you're gonna send it to the board of finance, that they should copy the fire commission as well. That's all I'm saying is copy the fire commission. You know, that way they have an idea what's going on too.
Yeah. Well, uh, I, when I'm reading this, it says reports to be submitted to the finance department, not necessarily directly to the board of finance, but to the finance department. What I, what I was getting at there is our difficulty in understanding um, their financial needs, what they spent money on already. And just to give you an example, you know, I told you that we had a meeting today about IT. Uh, they, they want, Ethel Fire wants some help, uh, upgrading some computer equipment. Well, I found out that, uh, Nick Cataldo, who is our IT specialist at, at Town Hall, had already gone over there and installed a wireless reporting system for the energy management. Because you know, the, the Ambresco Energy Management System that we voted on about four or five years ago, holds that building. And then I also, Nick kind of meant to be offhand that he had to go back and fix it because they went in and bought some routers of their own and put them in, and the signal interfered with the system that Nick put in. So we had to go in and straighten that out. So again, what I'm trying to do is, you know, they're buying stuff that we don't know about, but then they ask us for money for things that, that they need. Trying to integrate these things into one package so that, uh, our finance department knows what the assets are and knows what their needs are. Uh, we, we, it's kind of like we're, we're all half pregnant here and we're, they're doing some things independently. Uh, we're, we're, we have a hard time getting information that we need to do audits, you know, up to a point. Uh, they've, they've been less than cooperative historically about that stuff. Uh, what, what I'm trying to do is make it mandatory that they give the finance department, meaning Bob Kozlowski's department, the comptroller, any data that he needs to do his job and to do his audits and that we understand the flow of money.
Okay.
Right now, right now, we don't.
Yeah, right. Okay.
All right. So that's all right?
Yep.
So going back to number four, I hate to go back.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We're gonna go with Marty's recommendation for right now?
Yes.
Yep, okay, all right.
All right. And then, you know, everything's subject to change, but let's go back to what Marty recommended there.
Okay, I'll, I'll put, all right. So what I'm gonna do is, uh, I don't know, item number five is just a housekeeping thing. We just have to mention that it, uh, it consisted with the charter that it applies with state minority representation law. So what I'm gonna do is adjust my proposal. Uh, you know, we don't need to do a formal vote right now because we can do this by consensus. And then we will further this discussion and invite, uh, Tom and the, uh, fire chiefs to the next meeting. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. Good progress. Thank you very much, everybody. And, uh, that concludes our agenda. Uh, everybody is at home except Deion. She gets to go home now. And I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So will.
Right?
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Paul. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Marty. Thank you for your input.
Hi, everybody.
Um, thank you for being on tonight and, uh, helping us with that additional info. Really appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Take care. We'll, we'll talk very soon. Take care.